You know, now's the time to do it if we're gonna do it. But if I fax that tomorrow, it's a done bill because they're gonna mail it. That's the only thing they're concerned about. They say, "We got a mail out." And I said, "Well, bye." They run into lots of trouble if they didn't get it out in time. You know, we're gonna have to get signed over here. All right. September 30th.
This is a whole new one?
I did a whole new one for you. Just in case you didn't have any paperwork with it. I guess it was all under resolution. Yeah. Figure why do you do 11 of them? Might as well do 12. Because they all have to have papers.
And that's a person, I mean, you've got that solid. Yeah, yeah.
Please write, please declare. My allegiance to the United States of America. To recall that which is saying one nation, one ground, individual liberty and justice for all.
Wave the reading of the word. Disguise your blessings and graces upon us, plus the city and everyone in it. Amen.
Big crowd.
Clerk call a roll.
Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Sahasky?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Cavalero?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward?
There.
City Attorney David Hawthorne?
Here.
All present except for a first year ward, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one?
Resolved the minutes of the council meeting of August 6, 2002 are hereby approved.
I'll move it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved at the clerk's report for June, an amount of $4,739.67, July 2002, an amount of $48,0682, be received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, clerk is hereby authorized, directed to advertise or receive sealed bids in his office. Honored before September 5th, up to 4:00 PM, to be publicly opened immediately following in the council chambers for construction of the future River Road Utilities Contract in accordance with specifications prepared by Blazin, Balk, and Lee.
Move it.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
There's a meeting the council held on July 23rd, a zone change request submitted by Mr. Steven Tietro, change of zone from R1 residential and R3 residential to C1 commercial for his property located on Route 3 and Holly Drive, was referred to the planning commission. Whereas the meeting held on August 12th, the planning commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of Mr. Tietro's zone change request. Therefore be it resolved, clerk is authorized, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September 3rd, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers, to consider the zone change requests submitted by Mr. Tietro.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved at the request to amend subsection 177-13B of the city code entitled Accessory Residential Use Limitations Home Occupation by adding 6K Antique Businesses hereby referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation to be returned to this common council at a future meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why are we doing this? She wants to run an antique business in the first floor of her house. And we want to add it to what?
Home occupation.
It would qualify anyway because it's gonna be more than a square foot.
That's why we're referring it to, and I think that's appropriate. Well, they get a hearing in whatever the planning commission decides according to what's in the zoning. You suggested we just...
I'm saying that because it doesn't meet the other requirements, other than not being an approved business. It also doesn't meet other requirements within the home occupation law. So wouldn't she instead be better served applying for a zone change?
I think the better answer, Harley, is to turn around and say that what's actually being asked here, whether John knows it or not, is that the zoning ordinance be changed to allow antique business for home occupation for anybody. You can't make that specific just to this woman. If her other, if the other requirements she doesn't qualify for, for example, the square footage, that's a zoning enforcement issue, which applies for a permit.
I'm trying to anticipate problems down the road.
Well, I understand that.
I don't want them to say, "Yeah, it's okay, you can do it," as a home occupation, then come back and say, "No, you can't do it because you're more than 25 percent okay."
And that's fair, and I think she should be told that ahead of time, but it's probably more proper to do something like this as a, well, special use permit, which you don't have, but maybe a variant.
Knowing...
This referral will definitely come back to us.
Oh, yeah. I understand that, but also knowing the way... Let me rephrase that. Knowing some of the history of the actions of our zoning officer, I would not be surprised for this to pass and this lady be told, "No problem, antique dealership is now okay as a home occupation, and go ahead and do it," and she comes back and says, "It's gonna be more than 25 percent." "Oh, by the way, no, you can't do it." That would not surprise me to see that. So, like I said, I'm gonna try and nip that in the bud before it happens.
Certainly agree with that.
And don't tell her, "Yes, you can do something if this, and this, and this, and this," when she's under the assumption that all I have to do is get this approval, not jump through any of the other hoops.
Or she'll have to go to the planning commission, shouldn't they tell her that there's...
Well, she wouldn't have to go to the planning commission.
Yes, she is. Yeah. That's what it's being referred to. Yeah, I mean, won't they have to tell her that she...
Because she wouldn't have to go for a site plan review type of deal. This actually is not, because of the way it's being asked, is not specific for her. It's specific to the law to add an antique business.
Right.
Just like the lady with the nail salon. She doesn't have to go because it is not specific to her. It's specific to nail salons as they apply to home occupations. Just like this applies to antique businesses, how they fall under a home occupation. And for her to be told, "Yes, now, in a month or two, now, an antique business falls under the category of home occupations," and for her to think that she can do it and still have more than 25 percent and hire people from the outside, because that's another catch in the law. There are a lot of other loots, and she's not gonna fall under any of those, but still get thrown on. It's inconsistent.
But if, what we're doing is adding the business to the list, we're not approving it for that residence or that building.
I don't, I don't think her alderman or her know that.
Well, she should be, she should be briefed, and I will definitely see that...
Because I picture the first word, alderman, saying, "Put this on here so that she could do it."
I will, I will see...
Not put it on here so that antique business is qualified, put it on here so she can do it.
I will see that the zoning officer sends that information to her, contacts her.
I just don't want to get sunk.
Does this meet the, does this meet the criteria for a home occupation?
Well, no.
I mean, does it, do we even need to decide that?
Well, it, I think planning needs to address this.
And so they would address it as to, it does not meet the requirements.
And come, and come back with either a recommendation for or against adding this to the list of home occupations.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if, if it's, is it specific enough in the charter to indicate that this would not qualify for a home occupation?
Right now, it does not qualify. What you're being asked to do is refer it to planning to see their opinion on adding it, and then it would come back to you for a hearing.
Okay.
As to whether that should be added for a home occupation.
Yeah, and I think, once again, just like with the nail salon, is that once you, once you change the charter, it applies to everyone in the city.
Yeah, and that has to be brought up at the public hearing.
Right.
That has to be brought up.
I think that was one of the, one of the things that I thought was, would be, was my reason, one of my reasons for voting against the nail salon, was the fact that this is fine that this particular woman wanted a nail salon in her house, but it also says that you can put one up anywhere in the city.
And that gives even more credence to us having a special use permit section in the zoning ordinance to allow it in places where it will fit and not allow it in other places.
I think that we need that discretion.
And I...
Are we working on it, Jim?
Yes, that is, that is being, that's being looked at as part of the conference of plan.
Well, I guess I'm just not explaining myself clear enough, because again...
Though you are.
What I see is, this is on the agenda for a preconceived plan, and if that plan is not gonna fill any of the other requirements, then this isn't going to help.
Right.
Do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Because if she knows that she's gonna hire two people, just for a goof to say, and she knows it's gonna be 50 percent of her land, and she knows that other things are not gonna qualify, we could do this till we're blue in the face, but it still does not allow her to have her plan in place after it's passed.
Maybe the proper question, which would be, have to be directed to Alderman Lincoln, is, does he want this looked at if this particular person couldn't do it anyway? And if he says, "No, I'm only doing it for her," then maybe if she doesn't qualify, then maybe it shouldn't be added to the law, because as Bob went on, what you added, it's there.
Because I gotta believe she already knows, if she's gonna do it in the first floor of the house, the way it was explained to me, I don't even know by who, it's gonna be the whole downstairs of the house, and she was gonna live in the upstairs. That clearly wouldn't qualify as a home occupation, even if antique business was on the list, because it's more than 25 percent of the square feet. So, why should we do this if she already has a plan that's not going to conform to the other sections of the home occupation law?
Well, she may be willing to, when she finds out, may be willing to do this, but she can't do it if it's not on the list. But all that you're talking about right now should be addressed, I believe, at the public hearing when we address this. I think this needs to go to planning, let planning make their recommendation to us, see if they want to add it to the list, if they think it's in the best interest of the city, to add it to the list to be citywide.
I don't have a problem passing it on, but I'll say upfront right now, if she comes back to a public hearing and says, "It's gonna be half my house,"
No.
"There's no cold way in hell we can vote for that."
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Knowing it ahead of time.
It doesn't fit, if that's the case. But we don't have, in the, in the information that we have, we really don't have all that information.
If this passed, she would then have to apply for a permit for home occupation, right?
Yes.
And then they would have to say, "No, you don't qualify for what you wanna do."
And that's what I'm saying, do we want to go through all the hassle? If, if she already knows ahead of time that she won't qualify, we won't know that until we talk to John.
Yeah, probably oughta let it go to the planning commission. In the meantime, we oughta have Steve write her a letter saying that if it, if it did pass...
There are a lot of other rules to follow, too.
Yeah, you wouldn't qualify for what you have.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to send this request on to the planning commission for their recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Next is a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of $250,000 to pay for the cost of the acquisition and demolition of property of 411 419 South First Street.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
The next item, Your Honor, is for me to advertise for the primary for September 10th, from noon to 9:00 PM. It's given me the authorization. The only thing that I would say to this is that the Third Ward, Second District, I've been working with Alderman Weston, and we've had a lot of complaints from some of the people voting, as well as some of the people working of the other polling place that we were at prior to this. And so, based on that, Bob had contacted the Crossroads Tabernacle, which is on 630 West Third Street in Fulton.
That's the, the former Lutheran church there?
Right. Yes. And we, that's where we would poll from now on, if you pass this. Now, if you pass it, and I get a good hold of board elections tomorrow, because they're gonna have to mail out all the voter changes, so everybody's aware of it in the press, if they would, you know, maybe say something. It was, it used to be there.
Bob, do you have...
That used to be at that place.
Yeah. I'd like to just add a couple of different things. We, it was always at the Lutheran church, and it was an excellent facility. It was easy for the voters to get in and out. It was preferred by certainly the majority of the people in the, in the neighborhood, but as, as the Lutheran church closed, we had to look for another place, and we were fortunate enough, the school district allowed us to use the junior high, specifically Principal Mark Slazak, and I think I want to thank the school district and Principal Slazak for letting us use the junior high as a polling place. It was a public place, which is what we were looking for. Unfortunately, there was a number of complications that happened because of parking and find, trying to find exactly what door you should go in. So, this, this facility is a facility we've used in the past, and it will enable us to once again serve the people in the best, in the best interest.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council?
Audience?
Got anything, Coach? I had that.
Okay, yes.
We wanted to add on to set a public hearing to amend the Chapter 15 of the city code.
115.
And there's the backup, Joe. It's the soliciting peddling law that we had a hearing on last month, and it was sent back to legislative committee. And the hearing...
You're adding that? Counselor?
We...
Sorry, you're adding that?
Yeah.
Can I make a recommendation, by the way, Mayor? When these tables are set up, could they be the reverse of what they are?
Like U-shaped, so you can see people?
Well, the two end tables are...
Straight down line.
Instead of back.
Straight.
We can't see.
Okay. We can do that.
All I'm asking is, you're, you're adding that there would be a...
Public hearing on September 3rd.
For amending the soliciting law?
For revision, peddling soliciting.
Revision thereof?
Good job.
Yes.
How soon can they, can we get that information? The revision thereof?
It's only about a half an hour old, so I would guess within the next day or so.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that as soon as possible, please.
Sure. We'll get that to you as soon as we get it typed up. It's in longhand right now.
Great.
David handed it to me.
David wrote it.
Oh, I hope so.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Does anyone on the council have any business to bring before the council?
Uh, yes, I, I do. I'd like to address, actually, the, the members of the press that are here tonight. I just want to bring up a topic that has been discussed in the press the last, last week, and we certainly want to make sure that everyone recognizes the fact that, number one, we have an excellent garbage program. It's the most efficient, cost-effective program that we could put together. There's been numerous studies done, starting in 1995, to evaluate the garbage program. At that time, it was determined that to go to private haulers would cost at least two and a half times what the city is charging for their garbage removal. Recently, because of budgetary problems, we looked at where can we better evaluate our programs, how can we better distribute the expense of the garbage program. Through a public hearing that we had in December, ex-alderman Jim Rice came forward with a proposal, which we used. That proposal was to increase the garbage bill from $18 to $29, which would reflect more accurately the cost of the program, including the labor and medical insurance. There was a public hearing held, and it was explained very well by the mayor, that if we were to put this into effect, it would affect the water bills for the remainder of the year 2002. So, for the last two bills, the people were charged $40. Now, in January, that will revert back to $29, which will reflect the total cost of the program. We constantly evaluate our programs, we want to make them fair. The, the garbage program is specifically designed to be, the cost allocated based on the total cost of what it costs the city to provide that service. So, I just wanted to bring that up. If there's any other members of the council that want to add to that, I just want to make that clear, that for, for the people out there that may have forgotten that we had a public hearing, and that we specifically put in place the changes that we had to make.
Yeah. One more thing that I'd like to add to that, 'cause I think all of us on the council, and I'm sure the mayor hears about it quite a lot, the garbage thing. And I had several calls, as we've had several people here over the years saying, "Well, you know, I can take my stuff to the dump, why don't you let us through that?" Before you had the program you got now, you had that. It was called the sticker program. If you didn't want to buy the sticker, you could take it to the dump. The problem is, there was a large amount of people in rental units that didn't take it anywhere, except the backyard and the front porch and... Right, so, that's one reason that we don't do that. That was tried just before this happened, and it was not successful.
Wasn't successful.
And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
If any other aldermen have anything to add to that, I know...
Yes, I would like to, if I could.
Sure.
And Ron Woodard is exactly on target. One of the reasons we went with this program is because there was garbage hoarding. At that point, though, we didn't have codes. Whether or not that might make a difference, I would hope that would make a difference. One of the things we said when we established that program, because I was on the council at that time, is if we got to a point where the cost of the program was close to, or even to, or somewhere in the vicinity to, what a private hauler could do it, we would opt out. I would recommend that the DPW committee look into the program, because I understand that the Village of Phoenix has a program which costs about $31 or $32 per unit. That's pretty close to what we're charging. We can ask a question over the phone of any private vendor and say, "What are your rates?" And they'll give us the rates. And it may be much higher, or somewhat higher than what we charge, but unless we ask the specifics or go out for quote, and say, "Hey, you got a whole city of X amount of people, now what are you gonna charge?" Unless we do that, we won't honestly know what that cost difference will be. So, I would highly recommend that the DPW committee, I believe John Lincoln's the chairperson of that committee, look at the quote or the bid that Phoenix put together that they used to go out for quote, and let us look at that same bid and go out for quote. If we come out looking good, that's great. If we don't, then we may want to revisit this whole issue. Thank you for your time. Matt?
I had, I did a piece on it, I don't know if my place is saying, but I just want to let you know that a few weeks back, I had a couple calls about the raise of the garbage bills, so I went out and did a little ask, and I actually spoke to you briefly on the subject when we were around that afternoon. What I found was, is that like anywhere else, most of the people weren't informed, they didn't know why it had jumped from point A to point B, and even I tried to explain that to them, from what I had read, why the cost had went up. It just seemed that the whole thing might have went over their head, and no one told them in the first place, and for that matter, too, no one even knew that they kind of just filled out the check and sent in the bill. They didn't realize the garbage bill had even gone up any. So...
Absolutely.
I think it was just a problem being uninformed by the media's fault.
How we could get any more information out? We, the press covers the meeting?
Oh, yeah, no, I completely agree, and that's why I was surprised when I went around and asked people, and they said to me, "What are you talking about?" You know, they looked at me like I had three pets. I was like, "You know, this is your bill, not mine, I don't live here," so...
He wants us to look at it.
Well, another point to that is, when we paid for it in the taxes, then we had the exempt properties that would use it, weren't paying for it. So, now, it really is more fair this way, when you think about it, because if you use it, if you get a water bill, you pay for it.
You're still gonna have people.
But that has to be reviewed by the council, I believe...
Yearly.
Yeah, yearly, I believe it's in, calls for it in November, to set the rate for the coming year.
Okay.
And that will definitely be done, but that committee definitely can look into the, uh, the Phoenix situation prior to that, and come back and let us know what they find out.
The only thing I'm saying, Mayor, is that it, it needs to be looked into more specifically with regards to a specific bid similar to what Phoenix used, rather than just a phone call and say, "What are your rates?" Because the rate, if you just ask that question, and I think we got the results from three different private haulers, was much higher, but yet Phoenix is doing it...
Well, one of them was the...
And it's not that much higher.
One of them was the rate that they were charging the people in the city to swig off.
Right.
So, that...
I'm just suggesting that, and I'm not, and I'm not in by any way alluding to the fact that they, they may come in lower, but if we're gonna do it, we need to do it in a very specific way.
Yes, I agree.
I, I think if I could, just add something to what, what Alderman Cavalero was saying, and I just mentioned it to Alderman Sahasky, is that our DPW workforce is at minimum, and the same people that work on the garbage program are also people that work on all the other jobs that have to be done all year long. So, if you, my way of thinking, if you eliminate the garbage program, you eliminate those people doing that particular job, but in the wintertime, they're there to do the snowplowing and, and all the other jobs that are, that go into the operation of the city. So, that's always a consideration.
Oh, very certainly, Bob. I'm not suggesting that we're not gonna eliminate anything, I'm just saying if we're gonna do a comparative study...
Study everything, yeah.
We need to do it in a way that really gives us the true cost of where we are, and to let the people know that there is a definite advantage, hopefully, of our program versus what would happen if we went to private hauler.
But I, I think one of the things that we need to look at when we address this is sometimes private enterprise will lowball to get the contract, and then if you get rid of all your equipment, you're at their mercy.
Mayor, there's a way to deal with that.
Okay.
I was in purchasing for 12 years, there's a way to deal with that.
Okay.
Trust me.
Well, that's what happened with our insurances before.
And we're making some progress there, aren't we?
Well, we're trying to, but it's not easy. Anyone else?
I think also, let me, I'm, I'm talking a lot, I know, but I'm trying to stretch it to 8 o'clock. No, I won't, really.
You're like, we had a cross...
I think, I think Matt brought up, Matt brought up a good point, in that sometimes there is misinformation that comes out, or a lack of understanding as to what we as a city are doing, and I think it's up to us as, as a mayor and as alderman to, to communicate as best we can. And I think, far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna start to use the format of the common council meeting to address some of the issues that I'm hearing about, reading about, and, and just from our perspective as to why we do things and why we don't do things. There's specific reasons, and for us as a council or a mayor to be sometimes looked upon as not being very good at what we do, believe me, we've only got one job and one responsibility, and that's to, to appeal to the people that live here in the city and to provide services in the, the best way possible at the least amount of expenditure. And we, we all pay taxes, we certainly don't want to raise taxes, and everything that we do is certainly gonna be to work in that direction. So, I think, as far as I'm concerned, and I would also encourage everyone on the council and the mayor, at different times, at council meetings, specifically probably at the end
mayor, at different times, at council meetings, specifically probably at the end of the meeting, to address some of the issues that we're hearing about, whether it's by conversation, whether it's by, by letter, by whatever communication that the people decide to use.
Very good.
Open for discussion.
I think it's a very good idea. And along that line, last night, someone asked me, they had heard that there was some people that were upset that we had closed the swimming pool already. And the reason that we had to close the pool is they are staffed by our summer program people. Most of them are college students, and they had to end their job last week to get back to college. So, we were left without lifeguards, staff, and without them, we cannot operate the pool.
That's a perfect example. And I, I had talked to Recreation Superintendent Ostrander earlier in the week, on Monday, and he had told me that he had talked to the, the head of the lifeguards, and, and she said, "We absolutely can't do it. We cannot..." You know, even though, you know, the people are looking at, "Hey, the weather's ninety-five hundred degrees," or whatever, "The pools should be open." You can't, you can't staff the pools without, without proper safety concerns, and that's the, that's the lifeguard and...
And that is, that is done through our summer programs on a very temporary basis, and we do not have any full-time employees to do that.
Right, it's all, all used from mostly college kids.
Alderman Sahaski. Alderman Cavalero.
I'll say.
Thanks, Mayor.
Is Weston finally done?
(laughing).
I have a request slash question. I was talking a while back with the guy that delivers newspapers in my neighborhood, and part of the property conservation code says that the numbers on your house have to be X size. It brought it to my attention that, are there a lot of houses in town that don't have the numbers on the building? Don't we have somewhere a brochure that Tony had as part of the nine-one-one coordination that says that you've got to have numbers on your house?
I thought so.
They got to be X number inches tall, and do we have those?
Yes.
Could I get maybe a hundred copies of it to gift to him so that when he's out, he can hand them out?
Good idea.
Okay.
Put it on the Fulton City website.
Anything else?
One passamal.
That's it.
Ron Woodward.
I'm not doing it.
In case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is adjourned.